Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order our Board of City Commissioners for the day of September the 6th. Welcome to each and every one of you. Would you call the roll, please?
Bushong.
Here.
Gillum.
Here.
Harrod.
Here.
Maynard.
Here.
Hall.
Here.
Shaw.
Here.
Dykstra. We have a quorum.
Having a quorum. If you're able to stand, please stand. And Reverend Kerbo, would you lead us in the invocation, please, sir?
Father, we thank you today that we can be here as a community. I pray that you will touch each and every one of our commissioners, our mayor. Lord, those that have served, those that will continue to serve, and even those that are going to be sworn in today. I pray that our community will move forward united together, knowing that we are trying to accomplish great things in the city of Shawnee. And I pray that you will give to them wisdom and discernment to make the right decisions for our community. And we ask this in your son's name. Amen.
Vice Mayor Harrod, would you lead us in the flag salute, please?
Attention, position, clear. Our flag is the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one on our agenda is consider approval of minutes at the regular meeting of August the 15th. Have a motion by Vice Mayor Harrod. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by...
Commissioner Shaw.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Shaw. I was thinking Linda. I don't know why. Motion carries. At this time, I will recess our city commission meeting and call to order the Shawnee Airport Authority, and I will declare that we have a quorum. And so, item number one on the Shawnee Airport Authority is consider approval of minutes from the August 15th, 2016 meeting. Chair will entertain a motion in that matter.
So moved.
Commissioner Hall?
Second.
Second? Okay. Commissioner Gillum?
Gillum.
Okay, let's vote. Motion carries. Okay, I will recess the municipal, I mean, the airport authority, and we will go to the municipal authority. And I will declare that there is a quorum. And item number one is consider approval of the minutes from the August 15th, 2016 meeting. The chair will entertain a motion in that matter.
So moved.
Motion by Ron Commissioner Gillum?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hall. Okay, let's vote. Motion carries. Okay, I will reconvene the city commission meeting at this time. Item number two is consider resolution of appreciation for Wes Maynard, mayor of the city of Shawnee. Phil Alk, reading that.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Would you read the title, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A resolution expressing appreciation for the outstanding service of Wes Maynard as mayor of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, providing that said resolution be spread upon the official records of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, and providing that a copy hereof be presented to the said Wes Maynard.
I'm sorry, who was the first and second?
I was the second.
James made the first, Commissioner Hall made the second. Okay. I guess we need to vote on this. If you vote no, I'll understand.
(laughing) Why wouldn't do you that way?
Okay. Motion carries. Not surprised. Number two, three, how about that? Consider resolution of appreciation to Linda Agee, Commissioner Ward II of the city of Shawnee. Would you read the resolution title, please, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A resolution expressing appreciation for the outstanding service of Linda Agee as commissioner of Ward II of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, providing that said resolution be spread upon the official records of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, and providing that a copy hereof be presented to the said Linda Agee.
Chair will entertain a motion in that matter.
So moved.
Vice Mayor Harrod made the motion.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shaw. Let's vote.
Gillum.
Item number four is consider resolution of appreciation to Keith Hall, Commissioner of Ward IV of the city of Shawnee. Would you read the title, please, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A resolution expressing appreciation for the outstanding service of Keith Hall as commissioner of Ward IV of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, providing that said resolution be spread upon the official records of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, and providing that a copy hereof be presented to the said Keith Hall.
So moved.
Second.
Did you get that, fellas?
Yes, I did.
Ron Gillum and...
Yes, I got that.
Vice Mayor. Okay, motion carries. Okay, presentation of appreciation in plaques to Mayor Wes Maynard and Commissioner Linda Agee and Commissioner Keith Hall.
Yeah. Ms. London.
What are we supposed to do here? Mr. Erickson, I'm lost.
Sir, we can...
The vice mayor will present your plaque, and then you can send everyone else's.
Okay. Okay. So do you want us to come down there and do that?
Please, sir.
Okay. You've got to come down and give me mine.
Okay, I'll wait till you get the other two given.
Okay. Come on down.
Killing time.
A resolution expressing appreciation for the outstanding service of Keith Hall as commissioner of Ward IV of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, providing that said resolution be spread upon the official records of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, and providing that a copy hereof be presented to the said Keith Hall. Whereas Keith Hall served the city of Shawnee as commissioner of Ward 1, 4, I'm sorry, from September the 4th through September the 6th, 2016, and whereas he said, the said Keith Hall has demonstrated to be a person of upright character, a good citizen, a friend to many, and a worthy representative of the city of Shawnee. And whereas the said Keith Hall has helped make many important decisions affecting thousands of lives in this community by taking a positive approach to the many projects set forth before him, lending his mature judgment and experience to those decisions, all the while maintaining a level of unsurpassed integrity. And whereas he has been instrumental in the accomplishments of the city, that includes economic and cultural development, public safety, ongoing street improvement programs, and beautification of the community. And where has he, it is both fitting and proper for this governing body to officially recognize the said Keith Hall for his dedicated performance of the duties and responsibilities as a member of the Board of Commissioners. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, that they hereby express their sincere appreciation and gratitude to Keith Hall for his distinguished service to the city of Shawnee. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the official records of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, and that a copy hereof be presented to Keith Hall with the desire that he shall continue to contribute his talents and energy to the betterment of the city, and that he shall enjoy much happiness, good health, and good fortune in the years to come.
Keith, I appreciate it. It's been a real treat. What an honor. Thank you very much.
And here's the plaque to Keith Hall, Commissioner Ward IV. Says, "For your outstanding service, untiring dedication, and unyielding commitment to the citizens of Shawnee." Here you go, buddy. Thanks. Good job. Thanks.
Wes Maynard's here.
No.
I don't know who wrote all that. I got to read it.
Yeah.
Joe, did you do that?
No, that wasn't me, sir.
Huh?
That wasn't me.
Yours is long. Resolution number 6521. A resolution expressing appreciation for the outstanding service of Wes Maynard as mayor of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, provided that said resolution be spread upon the official records of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, and provided that a copy hereof be presented to said Wes Watkins. Wes Watkins serves as the city of Shawnee mayor from September the 4th, 2012, to September the 6th, 2016. Whereas he said Wes Maynard demonstrated to be the person of upright character, good citizen, a friend, a maybe... A worthy representative of the city of Shawnee. It's very hard for me to do this. Whereas he, Wes Maynard, has helped make an important decision affecting thousands of lives in his community, taking a positive approach to the many projects set forth before him, lending his mature judgment and experience to these decisions, all the while maintaining a level of unsurpassed integrity. And whereas he has been instrumental in the accomplishments of the city, including economic and cultural development, public safety, ongoing street improvement projects, and beautification of the community. And whereas both fitting and proper for this government body to officially recognize him, said Wes Watkins for his dedication, Wes Maynard, I'm sorry. Wes Maynard for his dedication, dedicated performance of the duty and responsibility as a member of the Board of Commissioners. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of City Commissioners of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, that hereby express their sincere appreciation and gratitude to Wes Maynard for his distinguished service to the city of Shawnee. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the official records of the city of Shawnee, and a copy thereof be presented to Wes Maynard, and the desire that he shall continue to contribute his talents and energy to the betterment of the city, and that he shall enjoy much happiness and good health and good future in the years to come. Right. All five of the plaques, mayor sent us Shawnee, September 4th, 2012, September 6th, 2016, for your outstanding service, untiring dedication, and unyielding commitment to the citizens of Shawnee.
Thank you again. I'm... Item number six is swearing in of Mayor Richard Finley. Ward 1 Commissioner Doug Bashong. I think we've already sworn in, Ron Gillum. Are we going to swear them in again?
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Ron Gillum, and Senior Ward 3 Commissioner, and James Harrod, and Ward 4 Commissioner Darren Rutherford. For all you gentlemen who go down to the front, it'd be greatly appreciated.
They're filling partial terms.
Oh, filling partial terms.
(inaudible).
All right, if you'll raise your hand and be sworn, I state your name.
I, James Harrod.
Do solemnly swear, or affirm?
Sigh, solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend...
I will support, obey, and defend...
...the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And I will not knowingly receive...
And I will not knowingly receive...
...directly or indirectly...
Directly or indirectly.
...any money or other valuable thing...
Any money or other valuable thing.
...for the performance or nonperformance...
For the performance or nonperformance.
...of any act or duty pertaining to my office...
Any act or duty pertaining to my office.
...other than the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
I further swear...
I further swear.
...that I will faithfully discharge my duties...
I will faithfully discharge my duties.
...as, and state your office...
As, and state your office.
...to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Right there. I think they're right there on your right, Judge.
Mayor, go ahead and read that item. Go ahead and read number seven.
Read number seven. Presentation of certificates of election to Mayor Richard Finley. Ward 1 Commissioner Doug Bashong. Ward 2 Commissioner Ron Gillum, Sr. Ward 3 Commissioner James Harrod. And Ward 4 Commissioner Darren Rutherford. Would you present their certificates, please, sir, your honor?
Mayor Finley, congratulations.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Rutherford. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to recess for a reception by the power of the chair. I'll call for a recess. Thank you.
I don't know what the protocol for taking this office is, but I'm going to take some liberties, and if you all will indulge me for just a little bit. I've got a few comments that I'd like to make, kind of in the, for what it's worth, category. First of all, I'd like to thank my wife, who's no longer with us, but for the many lessons that she taught me over a period of 40 years. And like most of my friends, she's here in spirit, and I'm sure she would echo their thoughts of telling me how stupid I am to take this job. But that they're somehow glad that I did it. And I don't know what that means. But this is not a job that I really wanted. I told a close friend of mine three or four years ago, I've worked on making this community better for 30 years, and if I could have fixed it, it'd be fixed by now. So I'm obviously not the guy. Well, in the process of doing that, I had several groups contact me during the filing period, some of which have been at great odds with each other. And it caused me to think, well, maybe I can do something that's in the way of bringing people together. So that's really the genesis of why I did this. It's not because I expect any kudos, and in the event I get a certificate of appreciation, something much shorter would suffice still. I spent my world, my life, in the corporate world, and I've learned a great deal about governance in the process. And as I've done that, I've observed what I think is tantamount to meddling in the way the city is run by certain elected officials and others. And to me, that's not what governance is about. Our job is about setting policy. We've been fortunate enough to make some very good hires in the last number of years. I don't know if any of you all have met Cindy Arnold. When she came onboard, the accounts had not been reconciled for some period of a year. Our auditors had resigned. We now are current as of every month. So she's done a wonderful job in that regard. We were fortunate enough to get Justin to stay on with us as city manager when we were looking. He's a good young man. I can tell you his heart's in the right place. I spent a great deal of time with him. Phyllis, of course, is steady as a rock. She's been here forever. And I've worked with Joe enough to know that he is a very fine attorney, and I look forward to working with all of the staff. I've not met all of the department heads, but I look forward to doing that. One of the things that I would like to try to create, if we can, is an ombudsman, for lack of a better name. I've detected that we have a lack of interface in certain instances between the public and between the city staff, and where we might have conflicts with code enforcement or various people. I think we need somebody that is the citizen's advocate to get some of these things done. I would like it very much if we could be as arrogant as Edmund or Norman. My friend Barry Moore had a big article in the paper yesterday about not granting a variance for somebody that's wanting to build something in Edmund. I don't think we have that luxury. I think we have to work with our constituents and what they plan to do. And my idea on code enforcement is to give people a plan that they can work at over a long period of time, and give them some incentive. They know that we want them to be safe. They want their employees and customers to be safe. So there's really no debate. The question is, are we better off working with them to allow that to get done, or are we better off leaving the buildings vacant like we've had the Sears building for all these many years? I would like to empower staff to do their job. They know better how to do their job than we do. Something as simple as stopping to pick up trash off the road, or to talk to people when they see them blowing grass clippings into the yard, into the street. We've got to begin to take a higher degree of pride in our community, and if we do that, then it will work its way up from the bottom. I've spent a great deal of time with Justin and with Cindy, trying to determine the city's status, both financially and how we stand from a surplus standpoint. It's much improved over what it was when Wes and this group came in, and to look at our debt service and our amortization, as well as the physical condition of the property. Deferred maintenance is the easiest thing in the world to do. So I'm really, I'm just beginning to scratch the surface, but I hope that over time that we'll get up to speed and begin to develop a long-term plan that will allow us to accomplish the things that we need. I think it's important that we mend relationships. I've reached out to many of our stakeholders already. I will continue to do so. That doesn't necessarily mean that they will respond. That doesn't matter to me. I'm going to continue to reach out and do the things that we can, and look for opportunities in which we can cooperate with our stakeholders. And by stakeholders, I'm talking about business and industry. I'm talking about retail at all levels, both downtown and mall, and everywhere in between. Our tribal partners, the Shawnee school system, to the extent we work with them, and the dependent school districts, the county commissioners, and everybody else that I can identify that can help us do our job. A lot of our goals will be in conflict with some of theirs at the time. We need to know what's on their agenda and determine how we can help them accomplish their goals, because in doing so, we'll create a better community for us. And as far as I'm concerned, this job is not about working for the city of Shawnee. It's about working for the community of Shawnee. So it's a bigger area that I live in. I think, and I've talked to Cindy about this, and this is going to be a longer-term project. I would like to develop a community scorecard whereby we do a better job of reporting to you how we're doing, the receipts and disbursements and those kinds of things. Now, I know there's a great deal of confidential information that's in here that we can't disclose, but we can certainly, in my mind, give you a better sense of where we stand and how we got there and how things are going. So we're going to be working on that. I want to budget down an additional level. We may need some additional staff for some of these things, and as much as it pains me to raise the overhead, we may have to do that in an instance or two. I think it's important that we measure the city's image. For too long, we've had a bad reputation. Our schools have had a bad reputation. These things are either correct, or they're not. If they're correct, we need to determine they're correct, and we need to fix them. As far as I'm concerned, we're through talking about these things, and we're going to start to move down something that's better. One of the things that's, one of my hot buttons, I guess the only project that we've done in my career at Shawnee that's met with overwhelming success is the swimming pool at Woodland Park. A number of us worked on that committee and the fundraising for it, and we're running a thousand kids a day through that pool. And it's the only thing that I've seen that will bring people to a location in Shawnee. And because of that, I would like to, for us to entertain as a community, expanding the footprint of Woodland Park. I'd like for Woodland Park eventually to go from where it is all the way to Santa Fe Depot, so that there's a large green space in there that will generally be recreationally oriented. The only evidence that we have of what will bring people downtown is in a recreational area. We've done streetscapes before, and it hasn't had a measurable effect on the number of people that come downtown. We've got to solve our homeless problem downtown, because that is a deterrent for people visiting our community. And I don't have the answers to all these questions, but I've learned in 40 years of dealing with public companies and private companies, that the people that ask the best questions generally are going to get the best answers. I see signs around town that, at the hospital, one out in front of City Hall, this is not a public storm shelter. Well, if we need a public storm shelter, we ought to be talking about it. Now, I don't know where we're going to put it, or how we're going to do it, but I'm convinced that we're smart enough to design a system to enlist enough buildings where we can get people in our community protected from inclement weather. The other thing that's near and dear to Cindy's heart is utility rate increases. Four or five years ago, we had a huge water rate increase. It was the first one that we've had in about 10 or 12 years. My inclination is to push those water rate increases along on an annual basis, and to give people a small increase instead of giving them a lump that they can't swallow down the road. That does some things in terms of our budget. That may or may not be popular, but I'm going to put that out there for your consideration. Those kind of are the long and short of my comments. Does anybody else? Lisa, do you have anything that you'd like?
No, Mayor. Thank you.
Just happy to be here. I'm not very good at speaking. You found that a speaking tonight.
Okay. Thank you all for indulging me on that. Item number nine, appointment of Vice Mayor.
I move we appoint James Harrod.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Gillum and seconded by Commissioner Rutherford to appoint Commissioner Harrod. All favor. Time to vote. Harrod. All favor. Time to vote. Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Again. Consider the consent agenda. Authorize staff to apply sub grant for the fiscal year 2017 Emergency Management Performance Grant funds from the Oklahoma Department of Emergency Management. Does that take any action?
It's all of those from I C V is we usually do them all together.
Yeah, consent.
Would entertain a motion to adopt the consent.
I move we adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
Been moved by Commissioner Harrod and seconded by Commissioner Gillum to adopt the consent agenda. Please vote. Citizens' participation.
Yours didn't register, Richard.
Motion carries. Citizens' participation. Please sign in. Tell us who you are.
Karen Baze Winslow with Shawnee Public Library. Mayor and Commissioners, I would like to invite you Monday, September 19th, to an art dedication for a project that our young people did as part of the summer reading program this summer. We had, as usual, we had a very, very successful and popular summer reading program, and Mary Sims, our teen librarian, got funds from the Junior Service League and the Stucker Family Fund to create a truly beautiful art mural in our library above the circulation desk. The library believes that we want to bring not just reading to the people of Shawnee, but we want to bring public art to the people of Shawnee who may not have the advantage of going to museums or travel to places to see it themselves. And public art is something that people can participate in making themselves and feel an ownership in it and a pride in their city. And so I'd like to invite you to come see this beautiful piece that highlights many famous landmarks in the city of Shawnee. It's really great. So here are some invitations. Monday, September 19th at 5:00 p.m., and we will have refreshments as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I told Commissioner Shaw that we had made a proposal through the historic and state and federal tax, Oklahoma Housing Finance, and the update is that we will know mid-October about the possibility of doing housing downtown that the city has already supported, and I just wanted to give you an update on that. And we're very anxious to work with the mayor and city. We have been able to do community storm shelters at downtown of Angels Acres and with the South Central Shelters. We have two there, and we'd be happy to work with that. And the system that we're working with requires that we have a storm shelter to maximize the point, so we'll have a storm shelter on location by Gaskell's Funeral Home. It's a project you're probably not aware of, but we're going to rehab, if selected, the Woolsworth Building, and then we'll build 12 new units of townhouses behind the Gaskell's Funeral Home. And by the Gaskell's Funeral Home, we'll have to have a storm shelter large enough for our participants down there, and we'll have a park area. So we'd love to work with you on the park area and what you're talking about downtown. And if I can help in any way on that, I'd love to. And you'll look down the line. We're getting ready to dedicate 109 lots of streets and cities and timbers to the city of Shawnee, and we have a park area out there, and we've taken care of and under all expense the entrance area out front on West MacArthur. And I've talked to John Crywiki about some drainage issues there, and we'd like to work with the city on the park area out there and with the trails that Abidis has helped us do to continue on to the airport authority. If you have any questions on any of those projects, I'd love to answer those. And once again, I'd like to say the praises of Justin and Justin even to Crywiki.
Thank you.
What you said earlier is really, I appreciate what you said.
Good evening, and congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you.
Nice comments, and congratulations to everyone that has their election and has won. And you're up here. I just wanted to comment on some of the things that you commented on. I was glad to hear that you were, and mentioned that you were wanting to work with tribes in the area. I am the governor of the Absentee Shawnee Tribe in my second term there, and I wanted to always let you know that my door is always open to anything here that goes into Shawnee, because it's our home state. I was born and raised in Shawnee, and the Shawnee Tribe is out south of town, and we are not going to go anywhere. The tribe's not going anywhere, and the city government's not going anywhere. So just the thought of working together and making sure that, you know, if there's any issues, that we come to the table, because in a couple of years back, I didn't like what I seen as sitting in my office and getting a threatening letter from the city and then someone coming in and wanting money. I would like to see us sit down and have a good, sound conversation of, you know, of neutral grounds. So I invite you out to the tribe, and I'll show you what we are and what we stand for at the Absentee Shawnee Tribe.
Thank you very much.
And I invite every one of you that's new elected to come out. My door is always open. If I'm not there, I'm probably in a meeting or on travel somewheres, but I wanted to make sure that everybody knew that, that, you know, we're there to help each other, you know?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Others? Okay. Item number 12, discussion, consideration, and possible action on Clara and Juan Guerrero's appeal of an administrative order requiring the demolition of residential structure located at 420 South Park Street.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I'll address this matter as Mr. DeBruin is after this evening. On August 11th of this year, Mr. DeBruin signed an administrative order that condemned the structure located at 420 South Park. This was, I think, the second hearing on the property. It had one initially, and the owner was going to come back and provide some additional information. The owner was not able to be at the meeting on August 11th, and so consequently, that order was issued. What you have in your packet is an appeal of that order that was dated August 12th. It's noted as Exhibit 1 in your packet, and that letter is requesting an extension. It notes why they were unable to be present at the hearing. Staff has had an opportunity to review this case file in greater detail and also review the request for an extension, and staff has no objections to their request. So what staff would recommend is that you defer this matter until your August 17th meeting and provide the property owner that 30-plus days to submit a remodel permit, and that way they can get underway with their remodel. Once that permit's in hand, they then have six months to make good on it, and that permit's also renewable for additional time if progress is being made. So the first step in that process is to submit all the permit, and if you were to provide them until October 17th, staff would be favorably to that request. Happy to answer any questions that you have. There's also someone representing the applicant, or excuse me, the appellant in this case that may wish to testify as well. Thank you.
Justin, what I read was that the applicant had indicated that they'd had surgery, and that was one of the reasons that they'd indicated they'd had a delay in this request. Is the applicant, have they indicated how they're going to be doing these kind of changes to the property so that we can see that they're practicing due diligence here?
Sure. I have not had that discussions with them, however they are in the audience, and I believe you'd be happy to testify to that, ma'am. Thank you.
Would entertain a motion to defer action on this item until the October 17th meeting?
Shall move.
Commissioner Harrod?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Gillum. Please vote. Motion carries. Consider resolution to declare a 1989 Ford 7610 tractor and a 2000 New Holland LB115 Backhoe as surplus property, authorizing staff to trade in bolt toward purchase of a 2016 New Holland T4.90 tractor. James, you have a comment, recommendation, I guess?
Mayor and Commissioners, yes, if approved on this and you approve the next agenda item, then yes, they will be used as a trade-in for a tractor. Just a little history on the New Holland or the LB115 Backhoe. I believe those were purchased brand-new in 2001. There were two of them purchased at that time. One of them has since been gotten rid of, and this one here has lingered on, and we've spent well over $12,000 on repairs on this thing, and we're not even using it now. So we sought to trade that in. And the tractor that, the Ford tractor, we also want to surplus is the one that's overheating on us right now. It's an '89 model tractor, and the equipment that we're using to pull with it now is the biggest tractor we got to pull, the 15-foot Brush Hog. You know, it's struggling on that, so that's why we got a Pull DMO 177. It is our recommendation to surplus these and use them as a trade-in on the new tractor.
James, I liked how you went about doing the, looking at, trying to move those two and shift some of the cost there. I noticed that you had like a $3,000 difference, and you'd indicated you were going to move that from another project. Which project are you planning on shifting that from to offset that cost?
There's, I have about five projects within that certain account number that I can move it from any one of those accounts. Right off the top of my head, I don't have a set account, but the money is there within those five accounts to have a little leeway. And a lot of times, I even have some money left over in some of those accounts.
Cindy will go on that.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, James.
So moved, Mayor.
She made the motion. Mr. Shaw made the motion.
Mm-hmm.
You'll approve it. I second.
Been moved by Commissioner Shaw and seconded by Commissioner Harrod to approve the item. Vote, please.
Mr. Mayor, we'll read the resolution title on the record.
Why don't you read the resolution?[1354.01][1354.01](Laughter).
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A resolution declaring certain items of personal property surplus and no longer needed for city purposes, describing said items and authorizing the trade-in of said items towards purchase of a 2016 New Holland T4.90 tractor.
Now we can vote.
Now we can vote. Motion carries. Item 14, discussion, possible action to authorize staff to purchase 2016 New Holland.
I'd so move, Mayor.
All favor. Motion carries. Consider resolution approving transportation enhancement project agreement with Oklahoma Department of Transportation for Main Street Streetscape Enhancement Project Phase 2.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner members, staff recommends approval of this resolution. This is a little after the fact. This project is already under construction, and we had a request from ODOT to submit for reimbursement for their portion of the project, and as ODOT was reviewing their files, they realized that they had not sent us the project agreement. So that is what this is. This is for the existing and current downtown streetscape project. And if you might recall, we received ODOT funding to help offset expenses associated with that project in the amount of approximately $400,000. Be happy to answer any questions for you. It's kind of a detailed agreement. We don't have a lot of flexibility on the ODOT agreements, but of course, a lot of what's in there is kind of not applicable at this stage, because we've already gone through the design and bid process, and we do have control and management of the project in-house, which has been great for this project. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
So no vote would not do very good at this point in time.
No vote would miss substantial funds.
Thank you, Justin. John, do you have anything to add?
Sir?
Do you have anything to add?
Basically, as Derek said, it's a housecleaning item under, they failed to submit us the agreement four years ago when we got the notice of award for the grant. We would have prepared all the plans next. They were involved with the review of all the project design. We had meetings with them. We also had pre-bid meetings and bidding. So the project's under construction. They'd done us, they were asking us to go ahead and start submitting periodic payment requests, and we went ahead and submitted an invoice and then tapped with ODOT quarterback. They didn't have the agreement in their files, so they threw these changes. It's a housecleaning operation on their part. We do need to have it approved in order to get the grant back.
Would entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Shaw, I don't know who seconded.
That.
It's Commissioner Shaw. All favor.
No more read.
Here's a reading.
This one's short. A resolution approving a transportation enhancement project agreement with the Oklahoma Department of Transportation for the Main Street Streetscape Enhancement Project Phase 2.
Now vote. My little cheat sheet here doesn't say that you're supposed to read. City manager for court.
Thank you, sir. It's my pleasure to update the commission on activities for the month of August. In August, we completed the Union Street Sidewalk project. There's a couple of minor standing issues, but it's 99% complete, and students are able to walk safely to the middle school, which is excellent. A previous project that you bid out, the Mall Drive repaving project, is about to start next week, so look for that. That will run the full mile from Kickapoo to Harrison. Obviously, a very heavily traveled corridor, so we're excited to get that project underway. Airport track lights are set to be complete and on. Some of the lights are partially on today, but they're wrapping up the rest of the lights this week, and we're hopeful that they'll be on on Friday, September 9th. The wayfinding plan that was adopted, accepted by the commission a couple of months ago has been formally submitted to ODOT, and we do have to have an agreement with ODOT to implement the plan along highways and roadways that are under their jurisdiction. So once we have that official agreement in hand, that will be submitted to you for approval, and we can go out to bid on those signs and work with our partners and visit Shawnee to implement that project and get those signs up hopefully towards the end of this year.
So how long has that project been going on, do you know? Can you remember?
Oh, gosh. Even from the initial conception, about eight years ago, eight, nine years ago. And we've made a lot of progress over the last year with the new plan and new partners at the table, and I think we're almost there, almost there. And finally, our station number two rehab project, Fire Station Number Two, we continue to meet with the architects and finalize plans. We're having another meeting very soon, and we hope to have that project to you for final review and authorization to bid. Hopefully, your second meeting in October, and it may end up being November, but we're nearly there. So appreciate your patience on this project. I think you'll be happy with the results and the quality of the project that results. Be happy to answer any questions about anything I mentioned right on my report.
Thank you, Justin. Thank you. Any new business?
No, sir, no new business.
Commissioner, comments? Do I go in any particular order?
So.
Nope.
Mr. comments?
I've got nothing.
Hang on. Somebody else? It was, I was pointing out to someone the other day that I had served from 1992 to 2000, and coming back now means that I have served in consecutive centuries.[1745.51][1745.51](Laughter). It was then pointed out to me that I have now served in consecutive millennium as well. I've been impressed by watching from the sidelines for the last number of years, the things that have happened here in the city. I felt a certain amount of energy come through, and I think it's there. We're looking at a lot of positive things ahead. Programs by, Abidis has been very excellent helping. So many things have happened that I've seen come to fruition, some that I envisioned and started to some degree many years ago. So I'm really happy to be back at this position and look forward to working with this group to keep a positive outlook on things and have a peaceful, positive, progressive future. But I'm glad to be here, and I'm glad I was elected, even though it was by a pair.[1797.01][1797.01](Laughter). Apparently, that was enough at this particular time. Apparently, that was enough at this particular time. Thank you.
I'd like to express appreciation for our new commissioners. I think a couple of them have been already sworn in, and I've acknowledged them, and Darren and the Board for, and a new mayor today, and I appreciate his goals and what he's lined out for us in the future, and looking forward to working on those. The, of course, I hate to say this, but Ron, I was elected the first time in 2000, so I've been around the block a few times myself, so I don't watch a millennium or whatever else. But anyhow, I'm looking forward to working with everyone, and seeing that Shawnee continues to move forward. I was, I've been down a month or so, and couldn't drive, and couldn't ride, and so forth, and Tim wanted, I called Tim, and he graciously took me around, showed me all the projects, and it's just really hard to believe how much construction and how much progress is going on in the city of Shawnee right now, industrial-wise, and commercially, and the housing additions and things like that, the timbers and the one out by the Grove School. It's just outstanding for the city this size, and we're really looking forward to working on those projects in the future. It's really, really, really exciting for Shawnee. Thank you.
Mayor, I have a few things, if I may. First, welcome to each of you. It's been a long and difficult process to get you all here, and I'm certainly glad we're through that, so welcome aboard. There's a lot to do, and I appreciate your statements earlier, Mayor. It sounds like you're ready to get right to the heart and concerns of the issues of the city of Shawnee. I'd like to say that I keep seeing projects as ongoing. Justin, you're just doing a great job. Cindy, as well. I would like to extend an opportunity for those of you that are out there, please join our committees to make a difference here in Shawnee. We need people on our committees who are interested in the city of Shawnee. We have the beautification and the traffic committee currently needing individuals, if you know of someone, or if you're interested. I'd also like to look at the future commissioners of rezoning our wards. We have had a lot of population growth, and I think we need to add to what we currently have, so I hope we can do that. And library, I don't know if you're still sitting out there, but you're doing great work over there. Keep it up. Our kids are so happy and so excited, and I keep hearing good things of the library, so thank you.
Thank you. My only other comment is, most of you that know me, know me enough to know that I'm pretty plain-spoken. I consider most meetings to be a weapon of mass distraction, and I've gone over the agenda with Justin, and certainly, I don't want to forestall any discussion that we might need to have with the citizens, but I'm not interested in meeting unless we need to have a meeting. So, to the extent that I get my two cents worth, I'm gonna try to compress the number of meetings and the agenda into something that makes sense. As I've said previously, our management does a very good job, and I think it incumbent upon us at the front to stay out of the way and let them do it. Without having been said, we're adjourned.
You just gotta adjourn the two authority meetings.
I thought Wes already did that. Okay. We got to adjourn, we got to adjourn the, do I call them back to order? I've got adjourn, adjourn.
Airport authority.
The airport authority. Don't you hate this? And what else? Shawnee Municipal Authority. We're done. Good for comic relief.